Well, this evening, we have Rob Frank, which we don't know.
That's correct.
He's not going to be here. And then Jessica's not here tonight either. That's it, right? And Regan.
And Regan.
She's enjoying.
That's correct.
And Sarah.
And Sarah.
Students give her pass. All right. We do have a copy of the meeting minutes from our July tenth meeting. Does anyone see any need for amendments before I ask for a motion to approve? Mary Ann?
Yep. Under BII, I think Gloria's thinking.
Yes, she is.
Yeah.
We just need to add in the last month, take out the last, the year part. The question was for any truancy letters sent in the last month. The response was no.
Any other changes? Not that I have with the amendment. Great. I have a second.
Second.
Are you talking in the motion and John seconded? All those in favor? Any abstentions? Great.
Oh, actually, I should have said.
That's right.
John's gonna stay.
You didn't watch the meeting.
You did. Actually, yeah.
But probably.
It's not the same as being.
Right. I'll welcome you in just a moment, John. All right. We do have an adjustment to the agenda, which is in our packet.
Yes.
And we just received page two of the adjustment as well, so I want to show it for us all to have.
Correct.
And we'll be handling that during personnel reports. At this time, we are going to open it up to public comment. We have seven people who have signed up to provide public comments this evening. And therefore, I'm going to ask that you restrict or try to limit your comments to within three minutes. So that we can move on to business before seven thirty. That's our goal, okay? So I would love to welcome Elaine Chambers. If you could come on up and introduce yourself.
Sure. Good morning.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Elaine Chambers. I am a thirty-seven-year resident of Hamden. A parent of two individuals who was educated through the Hamden School District, SAD twenty-two. Received a good education, very pleased with the results of them as adults, so thank you very much. And I'm also a very proud member and board member of the Bangor YMCA. And that's why I'm here tonight to speak. My concern is in regards to the recent decision of childcare changes or after-school care changes in the Winterport School. The Bangor YMCA has had a relationship with the Winterport School for ten years and has provided an excellent after-school program. And parents supported, children have been happy. And of the recent change to go with a for-profit company that has recently entered the market in this region. So I'm asking you, as a parent, as a citizen and community member of Hamden, to reconsider your decision. The Bangor YMCA has provided excellent after-school program for a number of years. When my children were going through SAD twenty-two, there wasn't the option for an after-school program located in the school. And I had chosen the option to bus my children to the Y for their after-school program for many reasons. Safety, the core values, the mission. But also for the additional enhancements that was offered to my children that currently are offered to the Winterport kids. And that is things like being able to have scholarships. If you can't and economically can't afford after-school care, the scholarship program. The scholarship program also extends to things like script lessons, summer camps, leadership school. Things that enhance the education that you offer in this community to the children there that the Y does step up to the program and offer. And offer to all children, not just children who can afford to pay, but those that can't through scholarships. It's an inclusive opportunity, not an exclusive opportunity. So I do ask you to consider the difference between a nonprofit, community, locally community, local community organization, and the relationship that we've had with the Winterport School for ten years over a for-profit, recently entered into the market company that is dangling basically a carat of a percent of net profit as the alternative to a long-term relationship. You are a local, you are community-based, you're elected by the community. And just as we are a local community nonprofit, we serve the community and you will continue to serve the community whether a for-profit company comes and goes based on economics. And as a board member, I appeal to those of you who aren't a board member to recognize that in the end, we are in fact intertwined by the need for each other's support. And I encourage you to consider the value of local, committed, locally-supported organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Lynn Darling?
Good evening. I'm Lynn Darling Malochek. I'm Darling's Auto. I'm a Hamden resident. I'm a Y board member and I'm disappointed in this decision. As a business owner, I try to buy locally. And I honestly can say sometimes it's not the easiest option. I would really consider reversing your decision. I couldn't agree with you more on most of your points. I just think that I didn't necessarily pay too much attention when I was voting in the past for the school board with the exception of Mr. Libotary, who I knew, very community-minded, very local business, loved children. That's what I'm looking for in a board of, in a school board. I'll pay more attention in the voting booth next time.
Thank you, Lynn. Diane, if you have a second.
Can I let, since you have so many, and I spoke so much the last time that you guys got bored with me, can I let the others go first and I'll just move to the end to answer any questions that you might have?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Jen? Jen, I'm not, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself so that I don't have to pronounce your name.
It's higher named than the last part's right.
That is the easier part. My name's Jen Montgomery Rice. I am a Hamden resident and have been for almost sixteen years. My kids went through this system as well at the end. We moved here when my youngest was in middle school. I am a new board member to the Y. But more importantly, I owned Parkside Children's Learning Center for eight years. A year ago, I sold that. While I owned Parkside, if you're not aware, it's a large childcare center in Bangor. I had the opportunity to speak with Diane Dickerson many times because of our shared interests of children and topics that we needed to discuss in the community. I also ask you to reconsider your decision to replace the program that is there with one from outside. The best thing, I think, that parents loved about having me be the owner of Parkside is that they knew they could find me. They knew where I lived, they knew that my husband worked in the community, they knew we were here. The same is true of the Y and the people who are part of the Y. If a parent has an issue, they will be able to find Diane. They will be able to reach out to one of the board members, many of whom are here, or even another parent to have their issue resolved. But Diane's always there to do that for them. And I question whether a large corporation would be able to be that responsive and know the community that well. So again, I ask you to please reconsider your decision.
Kristen Pete? Am I reading that correctly?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So my name's Kristen Pete. I live in Winterport. I have four boys. Last year, one of our boys was in kindergarten and went to the Y Care program. We also had an eighth-grade son at Wagner Middle School and a son at Hamden Academy. And one who's four, not yet there. But one thing, I attended the meeting last month and one thing that kind of stuck out at me is I didn't hear a lot about the safety concerns. We heard, well, the Y could just move to Wagner Middle School. And I can say I spent a lot of time at all three schools last year. And there are always people at Wagner Middle School. There are students practicing fall, winter, spring. There are parents there picking up kids from practices. There are band activities, after-school activities. So we're asking our little kindergarten and first grade and young elementary school children who are very contained at Smith School and they're in a completely safe environment, watched over very carefully by the Y Care, to now go into a school where they're going to be integrated with much older students. And I don't want my little first grader going into the bathroom and, you know, being in there with much older kids or parents that I'm not aware of. So that's a big concern. I heard a lot about Wagner doesn't have a playground, that Smith School does. But I think there's, you know, even a bigger issue at hand, which is mixing these large age groups and other adults and just a pretty diverse group of people with our small children. So I would also ask that the decision be reversed and I fully support the Y Care and will continue to send my kids there. Thank you.
Thank you. Emerald? You can, I'll let you.
Hi. Emerald Forzier from the Bangor Y. I spoke last time, but I also, I was a little bit nervous at the time, so I feel like I could possibly say something.
Similar.
Yeah, I was very emotional just in considering, remembering what it was like to be a little girl growing up in Winterport and thinking of those pillars that took care of me. And it was very much my school district, the teachers, the administrators, the people that I knew knew my family and weren't going to let me fall through the cracks. And then there was the Y. And it wasn't just where I did my after-school programs. It was knowing that my summer camp counselors would be the people I would see at Leaders Club, were the same referees and volunteer coaches when I did youth sports. And to know that I had an entire organization watching out for me as I grew through the years, it's really critical that we make it as easy as possible for families to connect with nonprofit organizations in our region that take care of not just one kid, but the whole family. Especially in a time when I think that we, me as a parent of a young child, it's a fearful time. And we want to make sure that we're looking out for one another. And to know that if I'm going to be able to have it easy for families to keep their kids in Y Care, that as one is growing old and there's swim going on and then there's youth sports and we can carpool from Winterport to Bangor, keeping families connected with one another and keeping families connected to organizations that we know are always going to have their best interests in mind, it's just a lifelong journey that we can start people with when they're young. And as their siblings are growing older and different ages, getting into the teen center, getting into programs as they're older, it's really, really important. I want to just echo a few of the few things people have said because they're so, so critical. So when we think of staff and not necessarily knowing who is owning of other organizations, for-profit businesses who aren't from the region, I can tell you, when our CEO says she has her cellphone on at 2:00 AM when there's an issue, it's true and she picks it up. And something that I think is so, so critical for families is if one child is in after-school care at Winterport and their other kid is at swim lessons, Keegan's gonna take care of them in swim and then they're gonna call Kristen, who's got them at Y Works, and we don't drop balls. And oh, yeah, Cal is gonna make sure that the financial assistance is taken care of and it's all under one roof. And that kid who so desperately needs something special emotionally in the summer is gonna get into summer camp. And we know who those kids are and we don't forget who they are. And our kids don't fall through the cracks because we work in unison with our school districts because we're a small community. And that's what is creating, you know, families who do want to come back to Bangor region and Winterport and Hamden and stay here. And it really gave me a lot of time over the last month to think about why this is so important. And I appreciate Kristen's thoughts because even though I was a die-hard Wagner pride kid, I mean, I took all the bumper stickers, I took all the pins, Wagner pride for life. And yes, I think that we've created an environment where our middle school kids are very upstanding citizens and we instill a lot of good values in them. Just recently, I saw somebody from my childhood who reminded me of a very traumatic conversation I had with her. And that was just waiting for basketball practice to start. It's not really the best place for our five, six, seven-year-olds to be because even though they can play on the soccer field, when soccer practice isn't in session, when soccer happens, when we get cross-country going, when the wintertime comes, the kids are inside. We don't have a playground outside. This is a busy place with kids who are in a much different developmental stage. And it's not conducive to the educational learning opportunities that you have in their home school where these little bitty kids are overwhelmed by these big spaces and new people. And it's important to keep that environment for them. It's important to make it as easy as possible for families to access nonprofits that offer so much more to the family. And I understand that it's so hard when you're in this pickle where you don't necessarily want to overturn something because it might be unprecedented or not done very often. But sometimes we're called to do the right thing even though it's not your favorite way of going outside of the line. So I understand you're not in the easiest position, but I'll tell you, as somebody who grew up in Winterport and grew up in the Y, it's a really important decision for our kids and our families, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. Chris?
Good evening. I'm Chris Rose from Winterport. Daughter in the Smith School. Just want to dovetail off of what we've just said. I think it is actually very important and very grateful to the board for revisiting this issue because it really goes to good governance. It's what we count on you for as citizens, your representatives. And I very much personally appreciate your willingness to look at this and to do your job as the supervisors. We don't supervise the superintendent. He makes a lot of decisions. He does a good job. But that doesn't mean everyone is the right one. And it doesn't mean you don't have a role to play when something has gone wrong or things that should have been taken care of or looked at maybe slipped through the cracks a little. Now, Mr. Lyons has been extremely gracious with his time. He met with me to discuss this matter and as is his wont, he was candid and forthright in a number of things he mentioned. And one of the things that has concerned me most about this is what are the requirements from Champions? Champions, you look at some of their other programs across the country and you see if they have a contract that parents need to sign. And Mr. Lyons expressed to me that he had no knowledge of that. He had no knowledge of what sort of testing, proprietary testing they require parents to allow their children to be subjected to. And to me, that really goes to the heart of due diligence. And if that didn't happen, we're relying on you to revisit the issue and to realize that, at least in Winterport, when it comes to having our children have after-school care at the place that they spend their entire day, it's not a matter of choice, it's really Hobson's choice. You're either gonna take Champions and whatever Champion says is gonna come with it or you're gonna have to go to Wagner potentially. And we've just heard about some of the concerns come along with that. So again, I do appreciate the board revisiting this issue. I think it is absolutely the appropriate thing to do and I find it very heartening. Thank you.
Diane, you're up.
How can you follow all of those incredible people? I'm gonna really open myself up. I expressed myself the last time of how much the Winterport community needs to us, how much we have been honored to be a part of that for the last ten years, that we have had such a strong relationship with our families, with our children. Audrey's gonna give you a brochure that Karen had asked me to send to her that gives more information about our program. And she is also, she and I have been in communication about our financial assistance and so on. And it's a, it's a very, we will never turn a child away for any financial restrictions. That is the policy of our Y. We do look at somebody's financial position when we decide what we do give them for financial assistance for all of our programs. They do write a personal story and I meet with them. If they don't feel that we have given enough or that they need more, I meet with them face-to-face. I have been known to go to their homes to meet with them. I've been known to go to their home if they have a problem, you know, with one of our staff people. So as everyone has said, we are extremely involved and dedicated to our families and to the community to make sure that their experience with any of our programs and certainly our Y Works after-school program falls right into that. So I'm gonna let it, Karen, if it's okay, I'm gonna just let it open to any questions that you all may have.
I do know that this is on the agenda too later this evening, so if you're sticking around too as well.
Okay.
Because we have representatives of Champion and of course our administrators as well.
Great.
But if there's any pressing questions that we'd like answered now, otherwise we'll, I'm sure, have a healthy discussion.
Great.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right. My report of, the first thing that I want to do is officially welcome John Hochschall to the board. John was a board member when I first owned the board. How long did you serve John before your term?
Two terms.
Two terms. And as we know, Scott Cuddy resigned and so John is finishing his terms. Is that how that works?
Yeah. I'll be the sheriff two years.
Okay. So I'm so glad to welcome John. He's one of those guys that keeps us, keeps us focused and reminds us of our role and the role of the board often when needed. And that was always appreciated as a new board member, so thanks, John. And now you're gonna have to think of a new cause because math is no longer.
Thankfully, every day math is no longer every day.
So, so welcome.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just bring to your attention, you all received Joe Pickering's letter of resignation in our packet. Joe has, I don't want to speak for you, Joe, but I also know you necessarily don't want me to toss you the ball, but.
Okay. I appreciate the time I've spent able to be on the board, but as many of you know, I just take my time and that's why it takes up a lot more time. And where the board decided to twice a month, I just felt that I could make that type of commitment. I don't want to work at somewhere where I can't be a hundred percent connected to.
So I'm sure you all feel as I do that Joe has been an incredible asset to the board. His pragmatic way of thinking, his experience and expertise has really informed a lot of our decision-making in the sessions and so it's, I'm very satisfied to go. Today is Joe's last meeting, so we have another vacancy that we'll be having to fill and remember. So lots of new faces come this fall. If anyone's interested in running for the board, look right at the camera.
Papers are due soon.
Papers are due usually the first week in September sometime eventually, so it's coming up.
That's set among.
Yep. Personnel?
Hi, the personnel. I have publicly announced the nominations of Erin Lobo, who is a college teacher, and also Sheila Fredlock, also transferred Richard Dudley from Reesbrooke to Y Middle School. Here at Hisman, a grade-five teacher at Weddington District, given town director and also a teacher. And the nominations, if you reference the agenda notes mailed out to you on Friday, we have four and then we have, I think, four more that are pending this evening. So the first one is a kindergarten teacher position at McGrath. Let me also introduce it by saying this is a new position we added given the enrollment we have, Mrs. Briggs, age one oh nine.
One eight, one oh nine.
One eight, one oh nine.
Yep.
So we have put this position in to accommodate favorable student-teacher ratio at McGrath School. The young lady we're bringing back has been with us a number of years, Joyce Sturdy. Taught with us for a large, no, it was twenty-five, I think, twenty-five years. And she's done a lot of long-term stuff in our district last couple of years as well. So my recommendation for your endorsement, for kindergarten teacher at the old Smith School is Joyce Sturdy. And annual salary is sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six thousand.
So, second.
Any questions?
I just want to make a note, this is my third kid in the district. This is the third time that we've had to add a teacher for each grade that my kid has gone into. I haven't one left one in the second. First and now AJ in kindergarten.
I'm going to honestly say AJ would be the last to have Mrs. Sturdy. I saw you on the list and I was so excited. Both of my kids, Mitchell had you for, oh, gosh, second grade and, so, well, good hands. I advocate for that. So welcome. Oh, all those in favor? Welcome.
I thought about Kelly's point. You remind me, if I'm not mistaken, we've actually had to do this in the last three years we've added positions because we do have a very fortunate prop. And that's the in-migration in our district can usually be strong. So we're adding faculty, not decreasing faculty. And in fact, by September, we're reserving, she's on vacation, I think we had a kindergarten teacher at Smith last year. So that's a fairly common occurrence. John?
Actually, I pointed out three years ago, Rick, that I thought the estimates from our consultant, referenced to population of the world, and you were a little bit off because maybe they were on the street looking at the new subdivisions or something, but we're going back home.
Okay. Next move to Wagner Middle School, grade seven mathematics teacher, Sean Kenniston. You can see Sean has a BS in elementary education, University of Maine. Has been teaching most recently in the neighboring district in Bucksport. With his experience, Sean's salary is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. My recommendation is Sean Kenniston, grades seven math at Samuel Wagner Middle School.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Sean is with us somewhere. Sean, congratulations. My position here at Hamden Academy, our teacher, Melanie Crowe. You can see Melanie has a master's degree from BU. She's been teaching the last sixteen years in SAD thirty-five, which is Marshall Middle School. With her experience, her salary is fifty-six thousand five oh nine. My recommendation for your approval, our teacher at Hamden Academy, Melanie Crowe.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Melanie, congratulations. Welcome. Go to your adjustment to the agenda. We have three nominations there. I'll start off, the grade-five teacher at Weddington School, Ashley Arsenal. You can see Ashley's degree at University of Maine. She's been a long-term sophomore in the district for a number of years. Also served as educational technician at Weddington School and also in SAD forty-eight. Her annual salary for the prescribed contract, thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. My recommendation, Ashley Arsenal, grade five at Weddington.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Great.
Yeah, Ashley organized it. I want to give you a heads-up by phone, Karen. I'm gonna do something that I've never done as a superintendent. I'm not gonna introduce the teacher anymore. The teacher's gonna introduce herself to you. Because I can't give a justice, you don't find that? It's not the next deal.
Not that she's any less.
She, she's prepared. I'm out there all four o'clock this afternoon, she's prepared. Robin Kluckey, science teacher at Reesbrooke Middle School, has a master's in secondary education, actually, two masters, BS in environmental planning, five years in the neighboring district, ISU sixty-four. My recommendation, annual salary forty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-four, is Robin Kluckey, science teacher at Reesbrooke Middle School. So move, second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, where's Robin? Five, Spanish teacher at Reesbrooke Middle School. You can say it again, two master's degrees, pretty impressive resume, including Stanford University, I might add. Hillary Bazant, point-five foreign language teacher at Reesbrooke Middle School. With the point-five position, that has an annual salary of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. My recommendation for endorsement, Spanish teacher at Reesbrooke, point-five position, Hillary Bazant.
So move.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, where's Hillary? The last one Gloria gave you tonight is Michelle Gagin, full-time Spanish teacher at the middle school. You can see her degrees, currently she's participating in our program online, master's degree in BS. Her salary is fifty-four thousand four hundred and fifteen. So I would introduce, Michelle is coming to public education in a non-traditional way. So she'll introduce herself to you. Michelle?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Good.
Thank you for having me here. This is a dream come true and I will share in just a second my background with twenty years in teaching. I actually have been working very hard for the last five years transitioning from private corporate teaching to Spanish teaching in the public sector, including my master's in education with a four-point O and a lot of substitute teaching and just finished a summer camp and much, much more. I'm very excited to be here. My twenty years in private teaching has been in every industry you can imagine. In Spanish primarily, English and Spanish within the USA, including Maine. Some of those industries which match the topics involve manufacturing, entrepreneurship, science. Um some of those industries which match the topics involve manufacturing, entrepreneurship, science, um medical, have I missed? Public speaking, marketing, um the last position, I mean I've worked for EMHS, Motorola, Sprint, uh IDAX was a client. All of these industries, I've also taught languages, like how to do Spanish, English in those particular industry that you need. And now, uh my last position was with Coffee News, I taught online for three years, Spanish primarily, Portuguese and then English. How to run a business overseas, mostly with Portugal and Spain, but I did a lot with Latin America, and the last country was Papua New Guinea, doesn't speak Spanish or a little bit English. So my hope as your Spanish teacher, if you allow me, um is to bring in the Spanish, of course, the cultural and some feet on the ground. The advantage of knowing cultures for cultural diversity, get well, to do well in your workplace, um in your community, and um thank you, thank you very much.
I recommend to you Michelle Gagin, and annual salary fifty four thousand four fifteen, for a Spanish teacher, full-time at Reesbrooke Middle School.
Second. Can I ask you?
I have one question, this is just, are both these teachers completely of each book or other?
That's a good question, uh where's?
Yes, they are both completely of each drug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Great, thank you, welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. Thirty years, I found a new way to refer the teachers to the board and have them introduce themselves to you.
I would recommend this moving forward, I like this very much.
I could not have come to you close, Michelle. Okay, so those are our high reason, we still have a few vacancies that hopefully will fill in the next couple of weeks, because as I mentioned, it's only three weeks from tomorrow, parents, school starts. Okay, now we go to the superintendent's report, Reagan, you said you'd be here, is not a proclamation, is Keith.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens. Who can meet the challenging challenges of s- changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate. And our schools will happily support it and empower it here for all schools and community members.
Thank you. I am the seven B, I have had no requests, I'm going to strike a line on what the first one said, I noted my ten years, this is a split session, so we're going to have to. I have given you an update that Reagan and I have been working on for a number of weeks now, and that's the modification to the assistant superintendent position, and now Reagan will be moving into the superintendent position if you want. I think it's it's really great with respect to forward thinking, what this will uh and the opinion Reagan and I need to be to again advance the initiatives of RSU twenty two. We're looking to post that upon Reagan's return from vacation, I would encourage board members to think about whether you'd like to be involved in that uh interview committee. Uh that's a very, very important committee, obviously, we hope to get off of the dime probably after we post it, probably in the middle of September. So if you have any interest in serving that committee, please just send me an email and we'll be moving forward on that. So that is the updated job description, I also uh will be meeting with Reagan when she gets back to update the current uh job description and superintendent, so it aligns with this one, we make it really documented very nicely. Any questions or comments?
Just being new with this, in terms of the superintendent's job description.
Yes.
That is something that is um approved by the board.
That's our, that's our one employee.
Right, exactly, okay.
Um so is there a way for board members to have some input into the revision of this?
I would say probably, just as I say maybe at this juncture now, given the work that Reagan have done over the last probably six to eight weeks, if you have any suggestions, just send an email to Reagan or immediately integrate that and make them, make modifications very quickly, yes.
I'm getting, I'm talking about the superintendent.
Oh, the superintendent, do the same thing, do the same thing.
I have, as far as I'm concerned, the assistant superintendent, I have no.
I'll have Gloria send out to you tomorrow, or if you would please, the current job description of superintendent, look at that, any comments you have, send that back to me, then Reagan will be meeting that back.
Gloria did send that to me, I'm putting in my request, so.
So just send this comment.
It might be a um, it might be something better fit for um at the end of the year when we're doing evaluations, timing wise, and the onboarding of Reagan into that position officially in July, so. Timing might be, send your feedback, but I'm just thinking in terms of timing and board approval.
Yeah, exactly.
A lot of it's gonna be based on this job description, because some of that, some of that job has changed.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. This is excellent, I would stand Reagan's nice job.
This will trigger more.
Okay, thank you, uh next notation, put in your calendar, we have made arrangements to visit UTC on December eleventh. I chose that basically because that would be the first meeting for our new board members coming on, actually maybe the second meeting, so that's why I intended to do that. So some of you people have not been at UTC, what that basically involves is a about an hour, a tour of the facility, Greg Miller is the director, Alan's on that board, obviously represents us. And then we'll have the tour, update the programs, and I'll conduct that meeting right there on set, so UTC on December eleventh. Also, the management day on August twenty uh six, I'd like to invite you, if you're interested, we have breakfast, we have four hundred people, it would take one or two. From seven thirty to eight thirty on that Monday morning, and then we stay here in Hanlon Academy for a couple hours and have presentations on various themes. Uh Brittany Lehman is doing some nice work again in formative, some uh compare sessions dealing with wellness in the workplace and solace, so we stay here until about eleven o'clock. So if you can fit into your calendar to uh join us on that particular day, that would be great, and that certainly is up to you and how that aligns with your particular schedule. Uh student rep, we have, now Mr. Tracy, I know you're going to have a s- a junior for us in the very near future, is that correct?
Yeah, soon as school starts, we'll start that process, which will only take a couple of weeks.
Okay, very good. Uh the monthly financial, we are now uh through uh month one, and I looked at that today, it looks great, anyone have any particular questions? That means we're about to seventeen percent of the year, if you could calculate that, so anyone's good so far? I don't really have any concerns, I wanna get back to Tony's question again about sometimes adding positions, we all know how that ebbs and flows in the school district, but I'm saying right now, we are in very good financial shape. Not only this year, but my other opinion, we're in very good financial shape overall. Any questions on the warrant that uh that Reagan has seen with us on a monthly basis?
It was on, it was on that, I, we've already been through, we hired uh a principal, have we introduced a principal, is that coming later?
That was last month. That was last month.
Was it last month?
Yeah.
Oh, she wasn't here, yeah.
Yeah, cause don't, I'm gonna follow up on your email, so we can ask, yeah.
It was on Facebook today.
I know, I am here.
So it was not, so it was not gonna talk about having a welcoming session, but we'll do that in the next couple of weeks. Email me on that, you can have a.
It was on Facebook, so it's official.
Yeah, so true.
Thank you, okay. And we have no assistant superintendent update, because no assistant superintendents here, so thank you.
That was cool, that's a good one. Okay, um questions of board members? Tony.
The motion that I brought up at this table, is that gonna be under old business?
Regarding the why?
Regarding the why.
Yes, yes.
I have a question regarding um Mrs. Kisman's brought up transfer as the GT director, does she have GT certification yet or stuff?
I believe she does have, yes, yes she does.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, and so now we're looking to follow up on your question, let's now we're looking to fill the full-time GT teacher position.
Any other questions of board members? We'll go into committee reports, my house.
Uh we have not met, we will meet uh in a month.
Okay, budgets, I don't believe that we have anything.
We do not.
Um athletic committee?
Uh we have not met, uh I would just wanna uh at the fifteenth of August, Fred is having a uh a first time ever for a while here, we've in a a process that we talked about during athletic committee. Um uh integrating all of our schools, um and all our schools' coaches, um he's gonna have a uh evening, four to eight on the fifteenth, where he's gonna invite all the middle school youth coaches. Um and of course, all the high school coaches to uh the academy and have a uh um four different sessions that evening and a guest speaker. So it's, I hope that we can get a good turnout, especially from our middle school coaches, cause that was kind of the um area that we were looking to integrate with our high school, getting our middle school and high schools online, so I hope we have a good turnout for that.
Great, building committee, Ellen? Um education committee?
I'm sorry, negotiations being, we have a minute, but I have a comment.
Okay. Usually I skip over that.
My comment is one of recruitment, remember that Scott Cuddy was our representative, representing the board negotiations, we have negotiations with both bargaining units this year. So please give that consideration, we s- we're gonna start hopefully this year in the November, December, the timeframe of those expire in the June timeframe. So if you have an interest, or maybe more importantly, if you have a question with what's negotiations, leave me a comment, we can sit down. And we really encourage at least one board member, if not two, to be a participant with me and me, and we look at collective bargaining contracts for our support staff and teachers as well.
Okay, education committee did not have a report out, correct?
Correct.
Uh policy committee, anything beyond, actually you have some subjects you wanna?
Well, basically, uh I think the uh the notes are a pretty accurate summation, uh we had a pretty uh, we talked about a lot of subjects in our last meeting. Um we've got a couple of policies that we're gonna be looking at for the first review, we talked uh quite a bit about uh board member use of social media, there was a uh draft policy that they proposed. Um yeah, just from the the monthly uh reports that we get, um we're hoping to make some changes to bring that around for actual, you know, further review for uh first reading. Um it was, as you know, they uh it was discussed that uh you think that there should be a border of pressure on uh the uh scheme of access act, and request for public records and whatever requirements are for making on records or how public records created or. And this kind of everything, so our records are also a legal means, that sort of thing. Um and uh it just wasn't really quite clear uh how many people were, how many members of the board had taken the training, hadn't taken training, so that was definitely, I'm talking, I'm looking further. And then, you know, we're looking to be um basically trying to work a little bit closer with the fifteen, in terms of getting their comments and suggestions, um what's possible to do.
Great, thank you. UTC board, how? Behavior review.
We just continue to go through the uh check on attendance and compare the requirements and statutes or policies.
Education foundation, I'm, I'm always excited to see that part in the job description.
The one person that we can make.
Spruce board?
Spruce has not met, but Mary Ann's gonna take over for me, I'll join her company for a committee, October twenty eighth, and then we'll be pretty direct.
Did I mean monthly or quarterly? Or is it?
It's not consistent.
Okay. Community relations committee listed?
We adopt that, we'll be needing to six to six months, and I'll discuss that a little bit while we come to meetings, cause I might want to change the time.
Okay, ad hoc board self-evaluation committee?
Yes, I'm very happy to report on this. Um Mary Ann and I have been working on the board self-evaluation for a year, and we are happy to say it is done. Um a little bit of history, we, every year we fill out a board self-evaluation, and every year that I've been on the board, there's been confusion around it, the questions haven't been clear, they haven't really been getting at the items that we need to evaluate ourselves on. And so um we created an ad hoc committee to look at the evaluation, to evaluate ourselves. Um originally, we started trying to just edit the existing form and realized we needed to just scrap a little bit and start over. So um Mary Ann and I did some research on um evidence-based board self-evaluation tools throughout the country. Um there wasn't one in particular that we loved, so we took pieces of different evaluation tools and put them together. Um originally ended with probably hundreds of um assessment points, but we have whittled it down. And so we will be sending you the final copy of the board self-evaluation assessment tool by the end of next week, I think I should do some formatting to do. Um and then we would ask that you fill that out, when's our next meeting?
September eleventh, is it September eleventh?
September eleventh.
September eleventh?
Yeah.
We'll ask that you return that, then September eleventh, by September ninth, no later than September ninth, so we can compile those results, um and discuss that. Yep. Um I, we also would love feedback on the tool itself, if we have any.
John?
You said that you whittled it down from a hundred to roughly a hundred and fifty?
Roughly, we have five women, based on our strategic plan, we also aligned the board self-evaluation with our strategic plan, so that's an alignment, as well as the scoring, uh is in alignment with how we score our students on our uh the report cards. So, I don't know, John, I'll get back to you on that, you'll see it.
Okay. Very good work. Policy considerations, too.
Alright, thank you, so uh first class we're looking at is KD, this is public concerns and complaints, we've spent a long time uh going over these policies, proposed revisions. Really our goal is uh to try to streamline the complaint process so that uh truly is being dealt from, you know, the lowest level there to the top, finally popping out of the board. Trying to prevent deep frauding, um and and really kind of narrow it down, also so to kind of do clearer complaints, um as opposed to kind of maybe something starting off as one thing, and then by the time it gets to the board, it's three different things. Um really trying to keep that narrowed in writing, um and uh this does represent some compromise, but like I said, we've been, we've worked at this for, I would say, six months. Um and uh so I would uh move that we accept the first reading of uh KD.
Second.
Questions? Has the, did the appeal formal drafted? Yeah, or is that to be done by the admin team?
That must be done.
That's a good idea.
Kind of draft?
Yes, yeah, yes.
I really appreciate this policy, well done, very clear, thank you.
It was definitely a team effort.
Great, any other questions? All those in favor? Great, thank you.
The uh second policy that we're looking at for first reading is uh policy IHAJ, having to do with uh technology, digital literacy. And this was basically um brought to us um because we haven't, as you can see, hasn't been changed since nineteen eighty-five. Um we felt that, you know, looking at computers um every thirty-three years. Is warranted, so next time we don't have to look at this until two thousand fifty.
I'm gonna miss you so bad.
Uh mostly, uh we were working off of a model um policy that that was brought to us, some obviously revisions were made to try to narrow down the language, the model policy we're looking at, uh we have a lot of repetitive uh statements, so. We felt that trying to make it more simple and clarer-tone, um but again, also trying to make sure, you know, the more modern outlook on the regarding uh digital literacy. And so I move uh accept the first reading, policy IHAJ, second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Alright, um now we're gonna go into old business, and this is where we have a conversation regarding after-school programming, um specifically, this is for the Wintercore area. Um we've heard a lot of, um received a lot of public comment, um and also communications, and appreciate all of the time and effort put into that. Ultimately, um the board is being asked to overrule the decision to have Champions at Smith School. Um and we need to make a difficult decision, one way or the other. Um so I'll open it up to um comment, we've had a lot last month, I don't know if we need to, I don't think, I'm gonna guess it's not gonna be unanimous, and I think we need to understand and respect that. Um but I'd love to hear people's thoughts, comments, and then we'll proceed with having a decision made.
So I was one of the persons who expressed um concern in being torn and um not being able at that point to um really make a decision. And in the intervening time. And in the intervening time, um, I came across a policy K F, which I sent to all of you, which is, um, use of facilities. And I think it's been included in the board packet.
Yes, yes.
Um, and I pointed, I pointed reference the priority of use. Um, this is board policy, this is what we set, uh, the board, we, um, set up, um, when we are going to open school up for other uses. Um, so for me, it becomes really important then that we honor and respect our policies. Um, the priority of use is third priority users, um, are, uh, people, nonprofits within the district. The fourth priority, um, users are nonprofits outside of our district. And the fifth are for-profit companies that have one company and are just spending. So that was very important, um, for me in terms of, um, beginning to think about this, um, because I think it really is important that we honor and respect our policies. That said, we also have a policy B G F, which I just discovered today, which says that we can suspend policies. It reads, "The operation of any section or sections of board policies not established by law or contract may be temporarily suspended by a majority voted the board members present at a regular or special meeting." So I've offered that also for consideration today.
Other thoughts?
The policy that the first policy that she was setting, I don't think even applies in this case. Champion was brought in by our administrative team as an educational service opportunity. That policy she was citing, I think refers to, say, community groups, the boys show, that wanna use the facilities for some purpose, but not to overrule admitted decisions, educational decisions made by the administrative team. The champion isn't just a group wanting to use our facility. They were solicited, or solicited by our administrative team to come. I mean, that policy doesn't apply to the situation.
Thank you, I'll refer to the comments.
I would just respectfully disagree. Um, the policy, um, is, um, use of the facilities. We have no control over this. Yes, indeed, the process that was used was as you described it. So it is, in essence, the policy wasn't followed from my perspective, that we, we have no control over this. This is not our program, this is not something that, that we have, and it's not an educational program, it's a childcare program. It's providing a service, right, it is, uh, providing a service, and I really respect the effort that's put into, um, investigating and looking at and, and visiting other programs. But I would argue, when we're talking about the use of R S U twenty-two space, especially given the first priorities that are listed there, we are talking about everyone who might want to use this space, so.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think that, obviously, I think that our overarching decision should be based upon, you know, what we think is going to be best, um, for the children that's gonna be served as a whole, and, uh, I think that that's our primary policy. Um, I think a couple of, you know, thoughts to think about, uh, is that, you know, if we keep Champions there, even though, you know, the Ys would have to move, there would be the option of still having the Y service there. Uh, you know, if, uh, you know, just get it to the Y, you know, Champions is not going to. I was impressed by, um, you know, Champions' presentation a few months ago, uh, and in terms of particularly, you know, with their focus on home health and that sort of thing. You know, you know, and I'm not saying that, well, let me put it this way, the, uh, you know, the Y, many people from the Y talk about how excellent things are in Winterport. If we think things are excellent in Winterport, then we should keep the status quo. Uh, if we don't think things are as important, then we should be looking at, you know, what can we change? Um, and adding an additional choice, I think is something that we have control in terms of, you know, acting in some way. Uh, from what I've been seeing for the past two years is that we haven't felt things are excellent in Winterport. So I just think that's one thing to do.
Ken, I would like to make a comment here for the benefit of the company. The most recent data given in your mailing showed that seventy-four parents have signed up District Y for a Champion program. Seventy-four District Y.
How many in Winterport, sir?
Uh, we have a high on Tuesday of thirteen.
Thirteen in Winterport?
Yes, thirteen in Winterport, forty at the Rod, and twenty-one at Wethereby as of today.
And certainly had forty-two in Winterport last year.
Okay.
And if there were problems in Winterport, and according to, uh, your assistant superintendent, she never ever once heard any complaint about a Winterport after-school program, we have never, ever once been told that there was any problem at Winterport, ever. So I would love to, with respect, ask what the problems were that we have never been informed of.
I think he's just talking about overall, some of our overarching issues.
District issues.
District issues in Winterport, not the Y specifically. And I, I can't, I don't want this to turn into a lot of back and forth with the public, so I appreciate you raising your hand, but we, we heard, we know where you stand.
Well, I have a perspective of my daughter is in Champions this summer.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that.
I.
Okay.
I don't, because I don't want this to be a battle of what program is better.
No.
I don't really even think that that is really what the debate is about. I think both programs are worthy programs, um, in marketing, I think.
But unfortunately, unfortunately, Karen, with respect, unfortunately, though, only one program was allowed to come to present to you.
Right, we understand that.
And that's what is so unfortunate, because if he says.
I didn't realize this was public.
It's not, and so, right now, Diane, I need to rope it in, it's a board business meeting, and right now, we've heard you. The issues here are related not to the quality of the programs. The board has publicly said, "We wish the admin team had approached this differently." It's flawed, the way it was approached is flawed, one hundred percent. And now we are in this very difficult position. We've had very frank and honest conversations with our admin team, and now we need to make a decision, and this is a board discussion about how people feel before we make a motion, one way or the other. So, any other comments or questions from the board?
Just to clarify, we're talking about Winterport in general.
Right.
But we've been saying anything bad about Winterport, you know, we've been saying, it seems like we've had a lot of issues.
Thank you, yeah. Jane.
I just have, I have a question about the financial aid package. You know, I saw with the Y had with a thirty-five percent, I saw that. I, when Champions was brought on, when we started talking about that at the beginning, I was led to believe our, I guess, and it could've just been me, that day themselves had a financial aid package. That is not true, that is not correct. Yours is, unless I'm misreading this, this is based on the D H H S. So if you're willing and able to apply to help the health and human services, then the subsidy, when you qualify, then the subsidy is given to Champions. Champions as a company is not subsidizing, is, am I correct with this?
Let's toss it together, right, can I ask that question, please?
Do you make a standard, is, is this good? Uh, so, so we use the subsidy piece from the state as one piece of our scholarship programs, and those families who may not qualify for that state piece, then we step in and run a whole scholarship program on top of that to go with, uh, families that are coming to the Champions or want to come to Champions. So we're not turning any kid away that wants to come in and be part of the Champions program. We're gonna, we're gonna open them and bring them in regardless.
So what, what are the standards that you use for that? If they don't qualify for D, I was, I'll tell you the truth, when I saw this, I was shocked, because I thought, okay, so this was pulling the wool over our eyes.
That's just one piece of, this, being licensed by the state allows us to allow parents to apply for subsidy up until the age of fourteen. On top of that, if they do not qualify that or partial it, we will step in and take care of. We have families that may have someone that has, uh, a sick parent going through cancer treatments, and they need something, so we'll, we'll go ahead and say, hey, we're gonna scholarship your, your kid this, you know, bring him here. So we're not turning anybody away. If we know that somebody wants to come here, we'll sit down, we'll have that conversation, and if it's something that's a hundred percent me, we'll take care of it.
Got you, okay.
Can we do the same?
Comments or other questions? Amanda.
I just wanna say, this has been really difficult. I hear everything you say, my kids are a part of Y, my husband is a volunteer coach there, I hear. But being a board member is really hard, and you have to make hard decisions, and you have to stay within your role as a board member. Um, and so, as a parent and a citizen, I, I love what the Y says, um, but as a board member, well, personally, I love Rick to overturn the decision, I'm going to support Rick. Um, what this has done is allowed us to look at how we communicate, what the expectations for administration, administrative communication are, and what perhaps our, um, due diligence process is. And we've had those discussions, and I hope that we continue to have these discussions. Um, so, I, you will see my vote, but Rick, whatever you decide, I would still support.
Other, yes, John?
Yes, well, I've been off board for two years, and so I'm not fully up to speed on this particular issue. And I'm hoping that someone on the board or the administration can explain in a few simple words, A, whether we're going to be voting on a new motion tonight or a motion that was tabled in this meeting, and B, what exactly would be the result of an up or down vote on that?
I will do my best, and then someone can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there was a, there was a motion table at the last meeting made by Tony to, um, reinstate the Y program at the Smith School. That would, um, displace the Champions program from Winne, the Winterport area. Um, so those thirteen kids, um, who are currently registered would have to find childcare either through the Y or another program. Um, that is it in a nutshell. How did I do?
We discussed the opportunity of transporting them to, uh, the, uh, the Reesbrook School, so that they would still attend Wethere.
We were on Wethereby.
Or Wethere, wow.
Wethere, excuse me, so they, so they would still have an opportunity, uh.
And what, and that's the whole thing, because I thought there was also some issue as to whether the Y wanted to displace at the Smith School or, or at the, uh.
The Y was offered Wagner School, they, they declined that offer, correct, Diane?
They have, when you checked it, that offered.
To my knowledge, Diane, you have not rejected it, we're still in conversation, Diane.
They prefer Smith.
That's correct.
That's what you're advocating for, right?
That's what we are advocating for, that we've been at Smith for ten years, and we're just concerned that Y would, once we've been, we've been there, that's been our home for ten years, Y would be the ones to be kicked out for a new company, and so our suggestion was is let the state Smith and let Champions go to Wagner.
And the state law prohibits two licensed child care from the same facility, correct?
I think that's true.
Is that the, is that correct?
And Champions is not licensed, and said they would not apply for license at Smith?
True.
You mean like.
We are licensed.
That's correct.
We are licensed.
At Wagner?
No.
But they do not, it's in the morning.
You're not interested in applying for licensing at Wagner?
At, at this time of.
And Champions, my friend, is a new year, so one unit?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have to give them.
If they get out of it, doesn't.
Yeah.
We have to give them a ninety-day notice.
Ninety days. But it's not, it's not all four years.
That is a concern.
That's not, that's correct.
That is a concern of mine, which actually we're required to give them a ninety-day notice, so, um, oh, if overturned, um, we have a transition year for these students.
The other question that's asked me on the app, Kevin, is going, because he and I talked today. If, um, if the board decides tonight to retain the Y program at Smith, what implications does that have on McGraw, whether it sucks? Kevin, wanna respond to that?
Uh, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're, uh, we were gonna stay with McGraw and Wethereby. We've definitely, uh, we've committed to that, and that's what we will do.
How are we attempting to bring in Chip, because we're supposed to have a, which is great, District Y program, that's where.
That's correct.
Students at both Winterport and the two Hamden schools have the same after-school program.
That's correct, that's correct.
And by bringing the kids from Winterport to Hamden, they would still have that opportunity.
Yeah, but my comment on that is, if it was the other way, if we said, okay, let's just buss them from Hamden to Winterport, that wouldn't follow.
We don't have a Y program in Hamden.
You know, it's a common, like, the other way.
Hey, gentlemen.
Jen?
I just, I, just because of the timing, because we are not on the same schedule, I wanna speak specifically to transporting Winterport students to Hamden. Logistically, that would, anybody who picks up their student, um, at McGraw or Wethereby at the end of the day, that would, that would be difficult, because one of the traffic situations buses coming in, logistically, and looking into that further, that, that wasn't a viable option, so I just wanna speak to that.
What, what time, what time?
They're done at two, and we're done at three. And so, I, I think, actually, it's a little bit beyond two, I believe.
But now.
Yep, and so, those buses, again, even if they were to come early to our facilities, we still have students in classes, and so, uh, that, that would be a little bit tricky, so I just wanna throw that on the table. I know that we had discussed that logistically, because we were thinking that through, as, you know, that was a great situation, but I'm not sure that, that could actually work.
So it's, it's thirteen to displace forty-two? Thirteen at Champions is the high on one day compared to forty-two enrolled in Winterport consistently for the Y?
Uh, no, that was forty-two last year.
And you know how many of that forty-two include the thirteen?
It's been for the past three, it's been for the past.
Do you have your registration for this year? How many numbers?
We currently have about twenty-eight parents who are waiting for this decision to be made.
Any other questions, Jim?
One follow-up question, you said twenty-eight parents, that's necessarily twenty-eight children, I mean, there's gotta be some multiple numbers in there somewhere.
Could be.
Any idea how, how from?
We don't, sorry.
Okay, okay. One other, one other question, and actually this is partially answered earlier, but any time I hear a two-party conflict, the first question I always ask is, does it have to be one or the other? Someone actually already answered that partially, because it said that you can't say losses, you can't have two, two, um, entities in the same facility, is that correct? So, is, sorry, sharing facilities are, I don't even know, that's invisible, but that's just not a consideration. It's got, it has to be one or the other.
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, so, getting back to the numbers then, uh, you said thirteen, I wanna make sure, you said, you said by Tony, thirteen to replace.
Yes.
Okay. Fifteen to replace, at least twenty-eight.
We don't count that, they're waiting to see what's happening, so we're not obviously have a.
It's a low ball in any way.
I do think you're on that point, though, this priority of use is absolutely. That policy.
I agree. So, do I have to bring my motion back to the table?
Yeah.
So I would, again, make a motion that, um, the board requests that it's reviewed and lies, reverse the decision if I allow Y to remain at whichever school, uh, school. All right, I'll get it.
Second. Any other questions?
Will that be effective?
Just to get the tired line down. That's, that's the logistic, this school.
One, that's a good question, I shouldn't draw any assumptions, but it would be applicable this way of year. I'm not sure if it'll be on, on September one, day one, maybe October, so that we need to work.
No, it's September, it's, uh, day after Labor Day, September, September third.
Um, question, no, no, because our, we're contractually obligated to give them ninety days.
Right.
So that's not true, we have to give them ninety-day notice.
Correct.
That's right. So if we, you know, with Tony's motion is, I'm looking at November, the earliest, um.
Probably should have a start date on November twenty.
Yeah.
I, I can't do math right now, I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna do.
With Champions, I mean, then, then it comes into discussion, if Champions is gonna be out ninety days, are they gonna, are they gonna show up for the ninety days?
So yes, we'll be here, because we, we currently have the license for that space, so we, then.
So you, you count for ninety?
We have, so if we have to turn the license in, then someone else, they have, the Y would see that, and then go reapply, and then have the licenser come back out.
And that's a very easy process to do, you can do it within a day.
Is there a cost for applying for the license, and how much is it?
Eight dollars would be all.
It's a hundred and twenty dollars.
There is a cost, I don't know how much it is.
Hundred and twenty dollars to apply for the license.
I will pledge to cover that cost.
But the potential damages are not just the license fees. We're talking about shortening the ninety day period. The potential damage is not a hundred percent. The potential damage is a.
Well, no, my question was, if, if we're saying you guys, your contract's done in ninety days, would they still work for ninety days and then, and then be done? That's what I, that's my question to Champions.
I worry about the potential damage in the ninety days when that teacher leaves, and the little kids say, where did my teacher go?
Regardless of who you're looking at, or whether, what decision is passed, about the forty kids last year that said, where did Y go?
Well, I know, but I'm talking in the middle, from a Friday to a Monday, and I don't, I'm not saying that one's better than the other, I'm just saying, I don't care if the teacher worked at Y or the teacher worked at J D, if that teacher's not back on Monday, then it's like, that's it.
It happens.
I would suggest, if we were to do this, to give a start date after, say Thanksgiving break, I'm trying to pull up the calendar, district calendar right now, just for the sake of getting a firm date on it.
And I can't find a district calendar.
I'll find it.
Yeah. So, I need to amend my motion. Here we go, oh, you got me there, yeah, okay. So, the first day after November vacation would be December second. It's November, yeah, Thanksgiving.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thanksgiving, yeah, Thanksgiving falls on the twenty-eighth, this happens.
That's correct.
Are you open during vacation time, Jim?
Who are you asking?
I am.
What the, what the Y kids do for ninety days?
We're contractually obligated.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just saying, what would, what, how could that, how would that, how could that even work?
And, I mean, that's a consideration, I don't, I don't know.
Could they go to Wagner for ninety days?
If they decide how it works.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to get a license.
Could. Right, but could they, would that be an option for them to go to Wagner?
From my perspective, yes, it's been a much longer.
Okay. Okay, so they could go there for ninety days and then go to Smith School.
Does our contract allow us to say if we both agree, if, if Champions agreed to not start for just ninety days?
I guess that's something Kevin and I have to discuss, I mean, I have a contract, I think they else, you may negotiate.
I think it says senior mutual.
Yeah.
Said mutual agreement, yes, it has, yeah, but we'd have to cross, uh, the bridge with him.
What does agree, would you please read that?
Says either party terminates this agreement or a specific program session with or without cause by giving ninety day prior notice.
I suggested the date, I'm just making December one, that's a Sunday, the first weekend after.
Is your motion to amend the amendment?
Yeah, I, I, I moved to amend it, make the starting date December one.
Do you have a second? No, it's open, we have a second, Tony, go ahead.
You can say no later, then, which that allows us to.
I suppose we could, but I don't know why you'd want to, I mean, let's, if you make a clean break on Thanksgiving break, you know, give, give, give him that, because Thanksgiving falls on the twenty-eighth, as I said.
We can vote on that amendment, and then you can vote to amend the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, all those in favor of the amendment? Which was to add, the mo, the new motion on the floor is to reinstate the Y program effective December one at Smith School, that's the motion on the floor.
But that's not what we're voting on.
No, no, that's clearly on.
No, you're voting on the amendment, the motion, sorry.
On the amendment.
That has nothing to do with the ultimate motion.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Correct.
So, if you vote on this amendment, the new motion on the floor, okay, did we vote?
Yeah.
So, we've got.
Okay, so we're voting for.
You need to hold your hand up, cause I need to get the way they can't vote here.
This is for the amendment only.
Change to December first.
Yes.
Correct.
Alright, all those in favor of the amendment? Uh.
Why don't you make it up? Waste a minute now. We have one, and, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, hang on now, and we're in work, we have, uh, John, he's one, John's blank, two, what, 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 what?
Just John.
There he is.
Just John.
No, Mary, that's not, she's already dead.
Okay, okay.
Thinking if any voted.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Are there any opposed?
Yeah, who's opposed?
Amendment.
Sorry, I made a mistake, so that passes.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
The, the new motion on the floor is to reinstate the Y program at the Smith School effective December first. Amanda, did you wish to make the motion to amend that motion?
Oh, yeah, I would like to say, uh, no later than December first, because that allows Rick to negotiate, depending on the decision, to negotiate that many.
Is that a multiple motion?
I made the motion to amend.
The motion.
The motion, to say, no later than December first.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Also, I, Gloria?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, all of.
I just wanna be clear, that you understand the lawyers, you have to give a minute, first minute, second minute, is this language about providing bussing still in this movement?
No, no, that's gone.
Is that gone? Okay.
So, we're voting now on the amendment to the motion, if passed, the new motion on the floor will be to reinstate the Y program effective no later than December first. Correct?
That is correct.
All those in favor of the amendment, motion, amendment? Okay, we have okay's. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, but.
Raise high.
I'm opposed, but it's, it's not gonna be enough, it's amended, yeah.
Jim and Lester.
Yeah, so, so, who's opposed? Okay, got it. Diane, you have to.
Jim and Lester oppose that, Gloria?
Yeah.
Got it?
Do we have any abstentions on that?
Yes.
We had two abstentions, Alan and John.
Alan.
Okay.
We have a new motion on the floor. Any other comments before we ask for a vote on this? I will repeat the motion one more time, so we all know what we're voting for. I also want to just say, I really appreciate, um, both the Y folks and Kevin for coming this evening. Um, and I trust that no matter what decision the board decides, that our kids are going to have a wonderful experience in Winterport. Thank God our admin team is doing a great job. So, with that said, the motion on the floor is to reinstate the Y program at Smith School, no later than December first. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands up.
We have one, we have two, we have three, okay, we have one in Winterport. Newberg, okay, so we have three Hamden, when we get the tally, we're gonna have to take a minute. Hamden has, uh, seventy-six. Two twenty-eight, plus Winterport has twenty-nine. Two ninety-seven.
Yes, yes, you want.
Okay, two ninety-seven.
Alright, all those opposed?
Okay, so we have, um, two hundred, eight hundred, four hundred, two hundred and eighty. We have Winterport, uh, uh, four, okay, we can have the, okay.
And any abstentions?
I don't think so.
Who was that, you showed them?
Yes, we did. Uh, I just know, I mean, whether it be two.
It appears that our first election motion is failed.
Hamden has seventy-six, that's four. We have four, Newberg has thirty-seven. And two in Winterport are thirty-eight. Five ninety-one, no, two ninety-seven, yes.
Did you get Frankfurt?
I have Frankfurt, no.
I would love to ask the admin team and the board to keep a pulse on this, and have discussions in early, late winter, early spring, about the next school year. Because I think we need to have a serious discussion about how we proceed on Winterport next school year. I'm not comfortable passing this motion, knowing the transitions would happen mid-year with the kids, but, um, I think we have to keep that on our radar spring.
So, we need a motion then, for the board to suspend our policy.
Yes.
Cause we have a policy to prioritize this.
Question is whether to put the law into the sector or.
I mean, there are four profit, clearly states four profit.
So, can you help me use them all time?
Yeah, but nobody else has asked to displace Acadia, so, there, there's no question of priority. If somebody else came in that was nonprofit to replace Acadia, then we would have to go with this policy, so if Acadia doesn't apply.
Acadia's a service provider.
No, 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 he was, I was just saying, he was giving me an example, he said nobody's.
I can assure you that Acadia Hospital is a nonprofit.
Yes, okay.
So, there's lots of debate on the interpretation, I think, of that policy, what's new, is what we do.
Can I give my opinion on that? Give my opinion, I think Alan Gordon hit the nail on the head, we're providing programming, we're not renting the building. It's a difference, in my opinion, we're providing programs. Well, I agree with you. That's correct.
I don't think we should be providing.
We have, we have Acadia Hospital, we use our health, we go to the academy every day.
Any, anyone is able to make a motion, I'm gonna bring this meeting back to order here. Anyone of a board, if a board member wishes to make a motion, you can do that at any point, you know, we don't need to debate that until there's a motion. A difficult decision was made, I appreciate everybody's opinions.
Uh, so I would like to make a motion that we suspend policy K F, um, to, um, accommodate the, um.
We need a differentiation, we have a program, I'm gonna get back to the Academy Hospital, we have a program that's scheduled here on a daily basis. This is if, if, uh, an entity considered wants to use our facility, um, on a weekend or whatever it is, this is the policy that governs that, uh, topic, if you will. Program is separate, I'm moving that down, we're, I'm gonna get the nail on the head, I'm like.
Do we have a second on the motion? The motion is to, um, under policy, uh, what was the number, what are you using?
D G F, to suspend K F for the purposes of.
Allowing Champions to take priority over the Y.
Yeah. Jane, do you understand, D G F?
But is it, but it's not to suspend it permanently, it's to suspend it in this one, out of this one circumstance, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll, I'll second that, so we can have a discussion.
Any other thoughts that people would like to share about this on, that's on the floor?
I'm not clear about what's being, uh, proposed.
Do, will you give an overview again of the D G F?
Well, let me, let me just, how many? How many of you read, have all of you read K F thoroughly? Have you, so everyone's read?
Can't say thoroughly, can't say thoroughly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it is a community use of school facilities, it's not a school rental facility thing, although it does talk about rental and service fees there. It says, "School facilities shall mean buildings, grounds, and any physical property except the Performing Arts Center at Hampton Academy." "The use of school facilities for the purpose of public education, recreation, entertainment," and we might wanna add childcare in there, "is encouraged." "Superintendent schools or his designee is authorized to approve school facility use." And then it lists the priority of use, first priority, RSU two twenty-two school programs. Co- and extracurricular activities and adult education, first priority for the school to do. Second, municipal organizations within RSU twenty-two borders and organizations that is solely for the benefit of RSU two, RSU twenty-two. Third priority users, nonprofit organizations located within RSU twenty-two. Fourth priority users, municipal or nonprofit organizations located outside of the district. Fifth priority users, commercial and profit-making organizations or individuals, and then it goes on to talk about rental fees. And the superintendent of schools shall establish such rules and regulations as needed to implement this policy, as well as to assure the preservation of school district property. That's the policy we're suspending. And D G F says, "The operation of any section or sections of board policies not established by law or contract may be temporarily suspended by a majority vote of board members present at regular special meeting." So, we're voting to suspend it.
And next time, Jim, can I ask you to do your homework?
Yes, you can answer that, yeah.
Or just pretend you didn't.
Did you say, did you say it's not covered by law or contract, though?
By law or contract. I assume that means.
We have a contract, I think, yeah.
I assume that is. Assumptions are dangerous, I don't know what that means, I, I, I assume, and then what?
I mean, if there is a contract with Champions, so.
So, that contract violates this policy, is what we're getting, or what I'm assuming is.
Um, I'm just wondering, is there any harm in passing this motion? I mean, I don't really see that there's any harm in passing the motion.
Well, there's, there's potential Y penalty in our passing this, and the, 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 any individual or group who, who consider themselves harmed by our action could in fact sue on the basis of we're not adhering to our own policy and so on. I, I, I clearly intended to vote on this, in, in the affirmative on this, on this motion. Uh, but, uh, of that particular issue, I don't think that's a serious, uh, problem, but I think it's a potential issue, and so therefore I plan to vote in favor of it.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a vote.
Go ahead.
Everybody understand what we're voting on here?
So, basically, Mary is asking that we give our blessing to the motion that we just defeated, meaning, the result, give our blessing to the result, basically, our blessing to Champions being in. Is that a fair, accurate summary of Mary?
No, I'm not blessing anything, I'm saying we just need to suspend policy K F.
And why do you think we need to suspend it, Mary?
I think.
Because we didn't follow.
Yeah, she's, she's recognizing that we did not follow the policy. Now, that is up for debate and interpretation, because we clearly have disagreement on how to interpret that policy, again, what's new, um.
But I agree with John on this, just that I have two senses, that if we're having a, a difficulty in interpretation, it's better to err on the side of people interpreting it as, as being applicable, and if we suspend it, then we should be taking care of that.
Well, I mean, we're suspending a rule after, for the lack of better word, regiment. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's a bad look, in my opinion.
We should have probably suspended it before we took that vote, yes.
Right, right, I mean, that's, and, and I, and thank you for bringing your attention, but, um, I, I can't be comfortable saying, well, we're just gonna ignore something that, that we broke, yeah, I mean, we can tell people, yeah, well, it's not our policy right now, that's, to me, that's a bad look.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask for a vote on this motion, okay? All of those in favor of the motion on the floor? Tony, do you have a vote?
Yeah, I'm in a vote.
Okay. And those opposed to the motion on the floor, Jim and Tony, and he.
Tony, yeah, I think he's, and he's, Tim, don't you?
And then Alan, are you abstaining? Alan's abstaining for a vote. Well, I have, I wish, let's all perk up here for our guests.
We're gonna have a presentation.
We're happy places, and we are going to welcome our, um, who is presenting today?
Kay, where's Kay?
Over here.
There she is, Kay, Kay Kistley Act is our faculty member in the Alternative Program here, and Kathy Kenwood also is a fellow of your case. Kay, can you speak to over, with the Hampton Academy Alternative Speech Program?
Yeah, um, thank you guys, and we'll try and keep this brief.
Yeah, um, thank you guys, and we'll try and keep this brief, I know it's been a long meeting, and we actually are gonna shorten some of the things we were gonna do. But we have some fun things to show, so. We're here tonight just to, um, give the board an overview of our program, which is the Alternative Education Program at Hampden Academy. And we do this every couple of years, just so the board kind of knows what we're doing and what are offered to our students. And I just have to get onto the Apple TV so I can show you. TV cart? And we thought it was kind of apropos to do it this year, because this, this, um, September would be the thirtieth year that all, the, the education program's been in existence. And, um, we've served over four hundred students, graduated, and, and we have, um, our, our students, when they graduate, we've had, oh, there it is. Ah, yeah, that's my screen saver. That's my daughter. This is a very short little, um, video, but we also, um, have a very short slide presentation too, and then, um, we have some, just some comments from former students and current students, just so you get a little idea of what our program's like and, and who we're actually serving. So, so, whoa, there we go. Don't do that to me. I don't know if you'll be able, there actually wasn't music to go with this, but I don't think it's playing. Um, this is a ropes course that we do, this challenge course we do every year at the beginning of the school year, this is how we get our students to bond. This is a beginning foods class that I taught. Yeah. That was a science term. This is them trying really hard to work together. So that was just a brief overview of some of the fun things that we get to do, and now we're gonna tell you a little bit about what the program actually entails. So, and, um, some of you, if you were at the drop off, out prevention committee, have seen some of these slides before. But it's a little bit about an overview of what our program, how it came to be. The program itself is based on control theory in the classroom by William Glasser, it was developed by Rui Yeli and Ellen Pariser. It's been in existence for thirty years, and these are some of the components. It's based on the theory of natural consequences versus punishment. Uh, focuses on what it takes to get and keep a job and be successful. And so you'll see a little bit later on, we actually have like a sign-in book that's like a timesheet, and we, um, the students track whether they're on time, whether they're working when they're supposed to be working, and what are the things that they need to know and do in order to be successful in the classroom, or in, um, the workforce. It works on building relationships between students and teachers, and students and students. And you'll hear a lot of that in the testimony from our students, about the relationships between, um, the teachers and the students, and the amount of respect that we have for each other. Um, and we meet students where they're at. So, our program varies from year to year, because we really work at looking where students are at, what they need to know to be successful, and what we need to teach. For instance, last year, I had an incredibly bright group of math students, and in my Algebra Two class, we actually went through the entire curriculum, we align ourselves with, and we're very closely with the math department, to make sure that we're teaching the same subjects. And we actually finished Algebra Two before the end of the school year, and so these kids were so motivated that we actually, um, I got from Mr. Ditzel the topics that we needed to cover, that they covered in honors Algebra Two, and we actually did that for the rest of the year. And they were very motivated, that doesn't happen every year, I will tell you. Some years, I'm working with, you know, really working on getting them up to like fundamental math skills, but these kids were really incredible. So, that's what we're talking about when I say we meet students where they're at. It's not a placement program, the students have to apply to be in the program. They go through a pretty intensive interview, where usually either Ken or I scare them when, later on when we talk to them, you know, they always.
Not intentionally.
Not intentionally, but they're always like, "I thought you were really mean," or "I thought you were really," Ken was really stern. And we, uh, we scare them a little bit, but not, not intentionally. But, um, they do have to go through a, a very intensive interview, and, um, and then we make a decision based on whether or not we think they would be a good fit, if we think they're motivated to be in here. In a few minutes, you'll hear from, uh, some words from a young woman that applied to our program three times before she got in. We take a maximum of sixteen students, there's just the two of us teaching. We both teach, um, pretty much every period, uh, so uh, we have no more than nine per class. Occasionally, I had a modern media class, I think, one year that I had ten kids in, but, um, so the smaller classroom allows for a lot more discussion. The students like it, because they feel like they can really ask questions and, um, participate in class. We do problem solving and team building as part of our day. We have a class called B M S, which stands for Body, Mind, and Spirit, that we do for twenty minutes every day. And we, um, do different kinds of activities. One time, we took a blanket and put it on the floor, and we had all sixteen of them stand on the blanket, and they had to completely flip it over without getting off the blanket. So they had to problem solve how to do that. And, um, this, we've had some pretty interesting ways that they do it. And it gets very clever, we've had, um, things where we had like lined up boxes, and they have to get from one side to the other without, you know, getting outside of the box, and they get really frustrated, and, and part of what we do is, we talk about, well, why were you frustrated? And, you know, and how do we, how can we work together to solve problems? And then we have a class called S A S C, which stands for Self-Assessment and Social Skills. And we were gonna call it just, we didn't wanna just call it S A S C, 'cause then we thought everybody would just shorten that. So, um, and that, that class is really, uh, Ken teaches that class primarily. But that was, we had a, I had a friend who taught a human relations class at the, um, at Eastern Maine Community College, and she lent me her curriculum. And Ken and I, over one summer, tweaked it to fit for us, and we do, you wanna just say real quick what you do, because you teach that class better than I do?
Well, it's a class where the students, um, learn about themselves, we give them myers-briggs, types, and, um, they learn that things don't just happen randomly, that there's a reason why they behave, some of them, and there's a reason why other people behave the way they do, and that somebody's not evil just because they don't agree with you, it's just based on your personality. Um, we do a lot of social skills. I think that it's, the program, we decided to do the program, because we had a, when we were in the Sonic Lodge, we had, um, a couch, and we had a coffee table. And there were three students on the couch, and it was a, a girl that was in the middle, and she wanted to get up, and she didn't want to disturb the other students, so she got up and she walked across the top of the coffee table. And everybody in the room just kinda gasped, like, you don't walk on furniture. She was horrified, she didn't know that you're not supposed to walk on furniture. So, we thought that if, if somebody is missing something so basic in social skills, that perhaps there are a lot of things, behaviors are happening because they, they legitimately don't know. So we developed a social skills class, in order to just get everybody a baseline of our basic, middle-class, um, social skills. Our behaviors are, that are required in your jobs and at school, and, um, so everybody starts off the year, it's a required course, everybody comes into that, everybody starts off on the evening for them.
Yeah, and Ken does a really good job of, you know, not, when he communicates it, of saying, this is what the different social classes are, this is what you need to know if you're in each of those classes, and does a really good job of not ever making the kids feel like he's identified them as being in either, any of those different social classes.
You can act anywhere you want at home, and with your friends, but at school, in a job situation, middle-class, that gives us what rules.
Yeah, and it's been a very successful program. We had a student a couple of years ago, who really did not get along with his parents at all, and when Ken taught the, the section on, you know, how you communicate, you communicate, there's a, a parent to child.
Transactional house.
Yeah, transactional house. And, um, adult to child, child to adult, um, adult, and what we strive for in All Dead is adult to adult. And he used that on his parents, and they actually did end up getting along a lot better, and, um, you know, so. We also have hands-on, discussion-based curriculum, so we do a lot, so you can, you can imagine, when you're in a small classroom, you have a lot of opportunity to really kind of delve into the topics. Um, and we also do a lot more hands-on things, when Ken does his, um, unit on immigration and US history, they actually, um, get an identity, and they have to go through immigration, they go through the different stages, through the, the health, you know, the health line, um, the employment thing, what you would've gone through on Ellis Island, and at the end, they find out whether they've, um, you know, are able to become a US citizen, or if they get deported. And the other students that are not taking the class at that time, that are usually in my class, are the interrogators. And they, they all really get into it, and they really learn a lot about immigration, which is pretty cool. Yeah. That, I'm just gonna skip, 'cause that was always telling you they have a sign-in sheet, and just, um, and that is part of their grade in All Dead. Um, this is just a picture to give you an idea of some of the things that we do. Uh, that picture up here, in, with, with all the kids around the table, every Thanksgiving, um, I come into Hampden Academy at five o'clock in the morning, and put a turkey in the oven, and, because we do have our own, um, kitchen and stove and oven, and so I come in and I bake a turkey, and all the kids bring in things, and for some of these students, it's the only time they've ever had, you know, a Thanksgiving dinner. And we, I bring in my good china, it's, it's English china, that, you know, I inherited from my great uncle, and they've never broken a dish. I've always been really good about it, so. Yeah. And I think that now what I'd like to do, I'll just leave that up, so you can look at the kids. And I'm just gonna read, um, just a few things from students. We ask the students every year to reflect on what they've done in All Dead, and how it's affected them. And, um, this is from the young woman I told you about, who applied for our program three times. She says, "As a freshman, I was this blob of lifelessness, and I didn't care at all. I was on track to fail, and I was okay with that. It followed through my sophomore year. I had two options, I could stay an extra year, or try and audition for All Dead. This was very hard for me, because I believed it wa, I wasn't wanted here. I had come to my freshman year and gotten declined. I had come halfway through sophomore year and got declined again. I was starting to think not even want to try, but I didn't want to flunk out, and I realized what a good opportunity I had." And so she did apply, and then, and then on the third time, they say the third time's a charm, we did accept her. And, um, I just wanna read something else she said about this. She said, "My favorite class was S A S C with Ken. I have never learned so much in so little time. I learned more about who I am, and who other people are, and why specifically we react to a certain situation the way that we do. I learned about how people learn, and why they learn that way. I learned things to do that would help me calm down, and how to deal with stress. I learned why people do small things, why it doesn't, why it bugs me so much. I know myself a hundred percent better than I did when I came into All Dead, and that is something I will always be truly grateful for." So, and this is from another student that, um, is still in my program, um, and will be here again next year. She says, "This program is struck, is tailored to stroke that. This program is tailored for people who struggle in the traditional school setting. Because of my ADHD in my past, the traditional school setting was extremely difficult for me. Unexpected panic attacks and attention deficit disorder do not mix well with school. My teachers were very supportive and compensatory, which not just allowed me to utilize my academic strengths, but helped me push through things I know I struggle with. I've had my five oh four plans successfully followed, and have been, been provided with adults I can trust with my problems. These things have been the main root of my success." This is a student who barely came to school last year, um, really struggled, um, but started to come consistently, and then towards the end of the year, was actually coming to school when she was sick. You know, so that was a big plus. And, uh, this current year, she's actually going to be going back into the academy to take some honors classes. And she'll still be part of our program, and get the additional support that she needs. "All Dead provided me with family when I was sure I would never truly have one. Talking to Ken and sharing laughs with him despite our different worldviews, meant that I was able to properly see his point of view and respect him deeply. Having Kay talk to me about movies and thinking of me when diversity activities were brought up, meant so much to me, and brought me to a sense where I began to think more level-headedly and professionally. Kay and Ken and the rest of All Dead brought me from a place where I was certain I never wanted to see this school ag, ever again, to a point where I am now looking forward to walking into this classroom every day." I'm almost done, I promise. They're just like really, yeah, they make me proud. But, um, you know, and I really didn't pay them to say Kay and Ken's name. "Alternative Ed has helped me in the past two years, from being a struggling kid who hated school, to being a senior graduating on time with honors. No matter how much I struggled, Kay and Ken were always there, helping me out, and telling me that I was a lot better at the things I do in class than I give myself credit for. I couldn't have asked for a better environment to help me get my senior year, and make my high school as great as it did for me." And this is from, um, and she actually said that I could use her name, so, um, this is a student that graduated in two thousand sixteen. And she said, "The Alternative Education Program at Hampden Academy saved my life. At the end of my junior year in Hampden, I had to leave school to go to Acadia Hospital to treat my suicidal ideation and depression, when a counselor I was seeing found out I was planning on poisoning myself. I attended the outpatient program for two months, discharged with unchanged chronic suicidal ideation of ten or plus years, and several anxiety disorders. To ease back into the routine of high school, both Kay Kisinak and Erica Oliver suggested that I look into the All Dead program. To make matters worse, one of my grandmothers that had raised me had just recently passed away. I was reclusive, unmotivated to go to school at all, but I agreed to the interview. It was a slow start, I was still prickly. However, by November, I had eased into it, and I found a new family in the All Dead room. Beforehand, my grades were Ds and below, if I even bothered to pass my work in. In All Dead, my grades were almost always As. We don't give out all As, I promise you. It shows, she's super smart. It showed me that I could be successful in learning something that I had previously thought I was incapable of. Kay and Ken worked with me, and were able to push me out of my comfort zone while still allowing me to have space when I felt safe and accepted. This is not to say that Hampden Academy does not strive to be inclusive and welcoming to all of its students, but a statement on how some kids thrive in a different environment. Many of us, especially those struggling with mental illness, need to learn how to thrive in smaller programs, and require more attention from instructors before we can take life by the mors. It's part of what makes us unique from each other, and the kids who cannot function or succeed in an average classroom setting need to be valued by their instructors. I stayed in All Dead for two years and graduated from Hampden Academy in two thousand sixteen. This year in May, I graduated with high honors from Eastern Maine Community College with a GPA of three point seven nine, and I was awarded the Excellence of Technology Award for having a high GPA and an impact in my program. Since then, I've been accepted to the University of Maine to study animal and veterinary science, with a pre-vet concentration and an ultimate goal of becoming a veterinary trauma surgeon and critical care specialist. The All Dead program gave me love, support, and safety when I was at my worst. Without Kay and Ken, I would not have graduated high school, and I firmly believe that I would no longer be living. Today, I have not self-harmed, bleh, sorry, I have not self-harmed in four years, and my depression and anxiety are manageable and not often an issue. The All Dead program gave me the chance to grow into excellence, and I have no doubt that it will continue to do that for other kids that have been labeled difficult students as well." And that was Autumn Hunter, she graduated in two thousand sixteen, she wanted to be here tonight to actually tell you that herself, but she was on family vacation. And this is a young lady who was so afraid of her own shadow, it's like, she's really one of our. It's like, she's really, one of our really proud success stories, I think. But, we just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea. If you have any questions about the program, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is it a normal type of diploma? Is there any distinction?
Yes, it's, there is no distinction. We teach, um, I teach math and, um, English. Ken teaches social studies, um, science and English as well. And we, we do follow the Hampden Academy curriculum, um, but we do it in a different way. And, um, you know, we, um, we do all our work in class and we kind of go over it and we talk about it a lot, but yeah, there's no distinction. There are no All Dead classes except for SASC. That's the only one.
Is it a normal day or?
We follow a normal day. We can, sometimes we, sometimes can vary a little bit. Like we have, um, we have one, two periods that are a little shorter because we take ten minutes off of each period to do that BMS class. But the rest of it is, we, we follow the, the plain-bell schedule. Especially because we do have some students that take classes in the building and then other students that go to UTC. So we wanna follow the same schedule.
You said there's eighteen students? Is that, sixteen? Is that your max?
That's our max.
Well, we've, historically, we've taken more than that. Sometimes we have people who are at UTC after days. We might have a late afternoon, so we'll take an extra. We've had twenty students before at a time. So if we have empty seats, we try to fill them.
Do they typically tend to be juniors and seniors? Because that's-
We like them to be juniors and seniors, but for the last, I don't know, five years or so, we've been taking a lot of stuff worse. We traditionally do not take freshmen. We like people to at least attend to high school before they, they come to us.
But we do never say never, like, we, we never say never when, like, if someone comes to us and says, "We really want you to interview this kid," we'll interview them. We've even interviewed, um, students from the Life Skills Program and talked to them about whether, you know, they felt like they wanted to be in our program. We, uh, didn't end up taking that student, but we really talked to them a lot. And we're very honest about why. If we, if we turn a student down, we are really honest about why we said no. But like Ken said, if we have, we used to have a lot of UTC students. And so we could serve more. But when you have this, when we have them all day long, then we, we s- kinda split to sixteen.
Do kids, once they're in the program, like say sophomore, are they in the program junior, senior year as well? Or do they interview every year?
So, they have the option of being there based on behavior and progress. We, we have a, a rule that you have to make. You have, we set goals and you have to make progress on those goals. Otherwise, they're doing just the same thing they do in the regular classroom. So if they're not making progress, then we dismiss them. If they are making progress, then they're invited back. We have people, our classes are kinda like a two-year rotation. So if we take somebody as a sophomore, by the time they're a senior, they've had most of our classes. So if you end up taking a handful of classes, then you can't, uh, but they, but they're still with us and they, they get the, the family feeling in a few classes.
It's also, um, that with, um, like you asked if they have to interview again. They don't interview again, but we do have like an exit interview at the end of the year. And they know that that's when they're gonna find out whether or not they're gonna be asked back. And they, it, that's a, they build it into way more stress than they need to, but you know-
But we also, we meet with them several times before we get to that. So if we give them, we, we meet them and tell them, you know, this is what's not working. Let's see if we can work on this. And we give them the opportunity to fix whatever it is that's, that's not working before we dismiss them.
And if we've had, we've had, we've had students that we've dismissed and said, "No, you're not gonna be coming back." But we, they know that they're not coming back 'cause we've talked to them repeatedly about what they didn't fix it.
So out of class, uh, it's thirteen to fifteen students, right? Out of a class of thirteen to fifteen students, how many, just average, might you dismiss in a year?
Yeah, many years, but I'm dismissing anyone.
Yeah, it just depends.
Yep.
Sometimes we have a heavy year. Sometimes we have five. So, but it's, it's traditionally, uh, in the last ten or fifteen years, it's been maybe one, two a year maybe tops. But we always take somebody in to replace those students if it's, uh, the last quarter of the year.
And what is interesting is when we do, like, dismiss a student, even if they've been a popular student in the program, we've never had the kids in the program go, "Oh, why did you get, you know, why aren't they here?" We've never had anyone question our decision, which to me is a clear, clear indicator that the kids know why that student's not back. They know they, it was because they didn't, you know, they didn't buy into the program.
They trusted.
Yeah. And then there is a lot of trust between the students and ourselves, I think. And Ken was talking about the Myers, you know, they give them Myers-Briggs. Well, Ken and I are the exact polar opposites on Myers-Briggs.
You've got everything covered.
I am an I, I am an INF, he is an IA.
ISTJ.
ISTJ. And so, that's a really good thing for our students though, 'cause we've worked really, really well together. And for them to see that two people that have completely opposite personalities can work together as a team and, and be effective is, is really powerful for them. You know, and it, it helps them understand that sometimes when they're frustrated with one of their friends, they, they get why they're frustrated.
And, and I would just say that the balance that Kay and Ken strike in the classroom with the students they get is, is always changing, so it's not a simple dynamic that they're working with. What we've seen even in the last few years, our students are much more in the anxiety, depression. And that's what is their, you know, their struggle to getting to school and getting into class and being successful. Whereas maybe before it was just, "Well, I'm here and I'm doing it, but I'm really not doing anything and I just need prep recovery." We're seeing much more of the mental health piece of, that just looks a different ad extreme on, on the program.
I started in this district in two thousand five with the, in the Alternative Ed program. And, um, when I came, I would say that our students were primarily UTC students who were non-traditional learners, who didn't fit well in a larger classroom setting and who were more hands-on, um, wanna do things. And in the, like, this past year, it's been a lot of really extremely bright students that should be in, um, AP classes and honors classes. But because of their depression and anxiety, they're not able to do that. And so we're, but we've gotten some, um, sometimes we can help them, sometimes we can't. You know, some, some kids, their anxiety and depression is so great that they end up dropping out of school. But yeah, we've really seen a change. And that, but we also try to keep a balance when we interview too. We try to balance that we don't have all of one type.
You know, sixteen ADHD, sixteen anxiety, just us four.
Yeah. So, and what's interesting is that we get some different types who normally would expect not get along. And they do, you know, they end up getting along liking each others.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you, Ken.
And we just also wanna thank you, um, we want to just real, I really want to, um, impress upon you all that we appreciate the support that we get from the administration in this district. Um, I go to meetings for, with other Alternative Ed teachers and they don't get the kind of support that we get here. And we really appreciate it, so we wanna thank you for that. We just wanted you guys to be aware of some of the things that we do. So, thank you.
When we went to two a month, three a month, I'm awful. I really am. However, I scheduled a fairly extended vacation around the first Wednesday of the month. So, my appeal to you is can you start two a month in October? Because if we don't, I'm gonna miss the first two meetings of this whole year. My whole vacation was scheduled around the first Wednesday.
Our meetings are second and, second and fourth, not just here. Okay.
I am on. I leave right the day after that first Wednesday in September, so I'll miss both of them. The oldest child of me is, um, is having trouble with not being a responsible board member in this year. It's like, I cannot change reservations or made and-
So, out of respect, um, I do want to let you know we have, um, a agreement that we will be here in September twenty fifth. And that's all they have to keep into that. They can't do, I don't believe they, but they opted not to do early September. When we gave them the option, they opted to go to September twenty sixth.
I mean, it's the second one.
Mm-hmm, the second one.
February, you still do the first one on the first day anyway. What people, the rest?
I have a commitment, first and third Wednesdays of every month.
Uh, so you, you reschedule, you reschedule based on the second and fourth?
No, actually I requested, we're gonna meet twice a month. We do second and fourth.
Well, I know, that was the vote. That was the vote.
Yeah.
Um, I understand. I was just hoping we could, until October, but okay. I won't be here, folks, for, for students.
You might never meet.
Let's have them, Kay.
We'll catch up, Mary.
If only I could go on.
Yeah, right.
Love you all, Miss Erin.
So I guess we're all set for meetings?
Um, no, we have Lester.
I would, we have a meeting, the, um, Community Relations has a meeting scheduled for five thirty on August twenty-sixth. And I would ask if you'd be open today.
This is Tuesday.
If we could, twenty-seventh, wait, yeah, the Tuesday.
Twenty-seventh.
Um, if we could have that at six o'clock because there's something going on at noon. From five to six, that I, I can't put, I can't remember what it is.
I think it's a sixth grade parent night.
What's that?
Sixth grade parent night.
Yeah.
A sixth grade parent meeting.
Is there a seventh grade parent meeting too?
Yeah. I know what to do.
And it's five to six, right?
Yeah, are you talking about the end of August?
Yes, yeah.
If there's any meetings that you need to set before our next four.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's unscheduled, but, um, but a dropout percentage, maybe this meeting.
Do you need to put a meeting on each other for September? As you're not gonna be here September?
I don't do it.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here.
Yeah. So, October.
Are you a doodle?
Yeah.
Well, it really is up to the members of the committee, by the way, who'd like to meet.
How about at your next meeting in August, you set a meeting for October and you-
I won't be in there.
And we'll report it. Any other meetings you need set? Any other business? I'd like to say farewell to our dear friend, Joe. You're going out, are you? I, tell me who's you. I got a motion second, I'll do some favor. Thank you, folks.